All right, it is officially 5:30, so I'm gonna call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Education to order, and I need a motion on item 1A, please.
I make a motion to approve the August 10th, 2023 board meeting agenda.
I see.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, our next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance in Moment of Silence. And we've got some students here. Attention, salute pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our next item on the agenda is communications, starting with public comment. Did we have anyone here this evening sign up for public comment? And then item 3B is our superintendent report, Mr. Brady.
All right, so first and foremost, thank you all for the warm welcome. I know the board members and I certainly enjoyed the Shield Shop and learning about that. So, thank you all so much, we appreciate it. We'll go ahead and start on the superintendent report. We'll start with Lebanon Elementary, but before I do that, I just want to say thanks to all our faculty and staff. We have had a tremendous first two days of school. And, you know, when you see the news, it really makes you thankful to be in Marion County. So, thanks to all the faculty and staff for that smooth first two days that I mentioned earlier. So, a couple of updates on facilities. Members of the Marion County Board of Education, Central Office, and KDE, LRC, I think the SFCC, several members were there, but we were to talk about the possibility of a new Lebanon Elementary school. So, I just wanted to update the public and to let them know that we're continuing to have those conversations, trying to move forward on Lebanon Elementary School. Continuing on to Marion County High School, so if you have not been in the Marion County High School library, it is really something spectacular to see. So, we have a picture there. It, when you step into it, it does not feel like you're in Marion County High School. It is quite a nice environment, so you can see a picture there again. Just wanted to provide a brief update on Calvary Elementary. So, we got a little bit of a time snap there. So, it's from July 15th to August 10th, quite a lot of work going on. And they've started to move up out of the ground on that facility. So, of course, a lot of work went on underground, but they're starting to progress. So, it, again, great, great progress there. So, I don't know if you noticed, but when you stepped into the library over here, and they've even made more progress since that picture was taken yesterday afternoon. But, outdoor classrooms are moving right along on that. It's gonna be a really nice space for our students to utilize. And, again, the goal is for all of our schools to have those in the near future. So, I wanted to highlight some professional development. Quite a bit of that has gone on in the last few weeks. So, first of all, our new teachers attended the New Teacher Academy to go over some procedures and some things pertaining to new teachers that they needed to know. So, there's a picture of our new teachers. One thing to note there, we have less new teachers this year, which is a great thing. We were able to do what the board had suggested with attracting and retaining. So, the retaining piece being important there with, again, less new teachers. So, but we knew, we felt like we got the best and brightest. So, we're pretty proud for our new teachers to join Marion County. Continuing on, we have moved into working with our RUSC grant. So, we applied for the RUSC grant, what, two years ago? Jason's motioning over there. So, we finally started to implement that. And it stands for, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, Rural Utility Services?
Correct.
Okay, so it is a grant that allows us to put telecommunications in both our schools and some of our local business and industry, so that we can be a good partner and utilize that, again, that telecommunications devices to provide better opportunities for our students and learning opportunities for our students. So, you can see there's some training that took place with that. And what that entails specifically there behind the gentleman speaking there is ViewSonic boards. So, not only, and we'll get into this in a minute, but not only did we purchase ViewSonic boards through the RUSC grant, but we also purchased additional boards that will go in all of our classrooms. So, we're pretty proud of that. So, next slide is the ViewSonic boards that I mentioned earlier. So, in addition to the boards that were purchased through the RUSC grant, we purchased nearly 120 additional boards that will go in classrooms across Marion County Public Schools. So, one of the good things about that, and I think I've mentioned this briefly earlier, is that we have the capability to do mass communication through that system. So, in the event that we had an emergency or a message that needed to go out quickly to our schools, we can utilize the software that came with ViewSonic to quickly get a message out across the district. So, I think that's an additional safety feature that, again, could be used in the event that we have an emergency. Continuing on, our teachers attended standards literacy training across three days. And I was fortunate enough to go around to the schools. And the work that took place on those three days around standards literacy was pretty impressive. I'm very proud of our teachers and the effort that they've put into making sure that we're teaching the correct standards to our students. And that will equate to better academic performance in future years. So, again, I'm pretty proud of them. And we did a survey with our teachers, asking for feedback about, did they think that this was beneficial? And it was overwhelming, the amount that said it strongly agreed. So, we're, again, pretty proud of our staff there. So, another training that was really good is all of our school office staff, counselors, principals, guidance counselors, let's see, bookkeepers, secretaries, all attended training with Bryn McLean. And she does communication training. And we specifically focus on how we can improve our customer service with our stakeholders. So, she spent several hours with us. We did some role-playing and some different things. And, again, Bryn's, she's a great lady, but more importantly, she does a really good job in her presentation. So, hopefully, we can utilize that to, again, to provide better customer service district life. I just wanted to provide a brief update on our summer program. So, we fed approximately 16,000 meals across 26 feeding sites. So, we, again, it was just a great summer of learning and some good meals to boot. As always, I'll update you on our preschool. So, our Dolly Parton Imagination Library, we had 640 with 1,097 graduated. Our preschool numbers, CES 19, LES 19, GES 34, and Wes Marion 39. So, I wanted to take a moment to provide you an update on our certified and classified positions. So, we have filled eight certified positions since May, 13 classified positions. And I'm very happy to say we have 10 additional substitute teachers. So, pretty proud of that. Hopefully, we'll be less covering this year, that's our hope. So, we do still have four certified positions currently open, two of which are school psychologist positions that, quite honestly, have been open well over a year. And then we have two classified positions open. So, we have, honestly, I think this is probably the best year that I can remember in at least the last five or six years as far as starting the school year with positions being open. So, again, pretty happy about that. I wanted to take a few minutes to recognize some of our industry partners. So, as you can see, there were some school supplies that were donated to elementary schools. And, again, thank you to Fuji Seals for that donation. So, I wanted to recognize our first responders. Marion County Middle School hosted our EMS and other emergency personnel to do an emergency management training. So, you can see them in the picture there. And, again, I just wanted to take this moment to thank our first responders. We have an awesome partnership with our police agencies, our EMS. Brian Smith for helping us with our AEDs that should be in any time. He's agreed to go around and check those and to make sure our batteries are up to date and just to help us monitor that. Again, just couldn't think, can't thank them enough. We have a really good partnership and a lot of support that we get from our first responders. So, I just wanted to take a moment to thank them. So, I wanted to say thank you to Kentucky Cooperage for a donation that's actually on tonight's agenda. But, they have donated $10,000 that will be used to sponsor a bowl game for Marion County High School football. So, again, just wanted to recognize them and thank them for doing that. So, up next, I have asked Mr. Holt, where's he at? There he is, okay. So, I asked him to provide a brief update to some changes that have recently taken place with high school athletics, or athletics in general.
This will be the fourth year now that we've been cashless at the gate. In the past three, we've used GoFundMe. Well, last year, this will be our second full year we're using this program called Evently, where we do all our facilities, our scheduling, our calendars, it's all in one place. So, they rolled out to be able to buy tickets last year. I didn't know how it would work because nobody that I knew had ever used it before. Well, Barstown High School had been using GoFundMe, switched to them last year. They had no trouble, and they had great success with it. The good thing that with Evently is the service fee is cheaper, and they give money back towards our subscription. So, we pay for the subscription to Evently to be able to use the software. For every ticket we sell, they give us back a percentage towards our subscription, which will take that cost down. So, we're actually hitting something back instead of just charging everybody the service fee. So, that was the main reason. There's a lot of other features they can do with this, from season passes. We were even able to offer family passes for families of three and four to try to get that price down in the sports, to, you know, save our fans' money. The other thing that we're gonna do, and it's easy to find, right? You can go to our webpage, it's www.mariancountyathletics.com, and that's where our tickets will be. You can see all our events that are going on on that webpage. Or you can go to Marion County Public School homepage, there's a tab Athletics. Hit that, and it'll take you right to our website. As you can see, we've got, you know, a couple of tickets up there. All right, the other thing that we're gonna be able to offer through them is they have what's called kiosks, to where we are now, we'll be able to accept credit cards at the concessions if we choose. So, we'll have an iPad on concession, the football and all that. We'll ring everything up through the iPad. At the end, it'll say cash or credit. If it's cash, we hit the cash button, we put the cash money in the cash box. If it's credit, we can run a credit card right there. Good thing about it, it's gonna be able to help us keep better inventory because it can tell us how many salt drinks we sold that night, how many burgers, or how many hot dogs we sold that night. And then, at the end, it's like a cash register, it's gonna tell us how much cash should be in that cash box the next morning when a bookkeeper counts the money. So...
Any questions, Mr. Holt?
Yes. Senior.
Senior says they're still free for all regular seats and home games. 55 and open.
It's very easy to use. I've already purchased my season pass, so it's really easy.
And with this, with GoFundMe, you always have to have your phone, and we had a validation ticket. With Evently, you can print it out if you choose, as long as we can scan that QR code. So, if somebody buys a ticket, if somebody screenshots and sends it to them, they have it on their phone, we scan that QR code, you can screenshot it yourself in QR mode. Like I said, you're at your desk, if somebody buys a ticket, they wanna print it out, just like a season pass, if you buy a season pass, it can be printed out. Have them walk, and show it to us. We scan it with our devices, and it go right in. Yes, sir.
There's no service charge when you buy a ticket? There's not an item that says $1 service charge? It's all in one price?
We're charging $6 still, it does have a service fee, it's 85 cents instead of a dollar.
It'll add that to the ticket?
It'll add that to the ticket, so it's 6.85 for a ticket that says sale.
It's gone down, son.
Yes, the service fee's cheaper, like I said. And they give us a percentage of that 85 cents back towards our subscription. So, we're actually hitting something back now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Holt.
Thank you.
All right, that's it. Thank you all.
All right, next item on the agenda is our Marion County Middle School student presentation.
All right, so, you know, it's August, we've only had two days of school, so we can't really put on much of a show for you. But, we did have a few things that our students are gonna showcase for you. So, first of all, this is Ann Hayden and Caitlin. And they are going to share with you our knight pledge, which we say every morning. And I talked to you about how these knight books are kind of connected to these traits of being a knight, okay?
We are knights. Knights are kind, needed, independent, goative, hardworking, thoughtful, and successful. We are knights, and knights rise together.
Thank you. Next, we have Eleanor. And Eleanor's gonna talk to you just a few minutes about our sixth grade camp, which we hosted on July 31st for all of our sixth graders, and about how her first day of school went.
I remember when I went to the sixth grade camp last year. I remember being very nervous. And this year, other leaders and I, we tried to make this year's sixth graders feel as comfortable as possible. The biggest concern that the sixth graders had was getting where they needed to be on time. Helpers were in the hallways, ready to help show where classes were in other locations. And as well as my first day back, it went absolutely great. Walking down the hallway was very smooth, and everyone was glad to be back.
And lastly, we have Emma. And Emma went to the state 4H competition and placed third in the state this summer for her 4H speech. So, Emma's gonna share her 4H speech with us.
What do you think is the best pet to hunt? In my opinion, I believe a chicken makes for a fine sidekick. Now, I beg your thinking. A chicken? Wait, is this some kind of joke? But actually, I'm very serious. Chickens can make excellent pets for short people. Reasons being, chickens are very low maintenance. They deal away with unwanted pests. And they produce exceptional eggs. My family and I love to enjoy it. Chickens are rare stewards for many more, because unlike other pets, they're so effortless to take care of. I mean, it's so simple, a chicken can probably take care of itself, if it really wanted to. The average person doesn't always think a modern chicken is something to love in church, but more of a non-nomesticated farm man. However, in their own people, have chickens in their own backyards, even if they're not farmers. Seemingly, one of the most common reasons to buy a whole chicken is you barely have to look to bank, and you still get something in return. When I say it's easy, I'm not fibbing. Although, there have been up under, running water, shelter, and plenty of chicken feed. Trust me, it's that simple. Frankly, I love feeding my chickens. I gotta take care of them myself. Now, normally, having more things to attend to is like a birdie. But since feeding chickens is so simple, I surprisingly enjoy the extra task. Have you ever had a situation where you just couldn't stand any more of the bugs and creatures roaming your space? Well, I believe I have a more solution. Chickens absolutely love gonging up in swarms. In fact, a chicken will eat about four to five ounces of chicken feed a day. However, chickens on average eat more insects than eat chicken feed. So, you know it has to be an incredible amount of bug-feeding gist. Could you imagine how many insects a chicken can expel on a whole year? I mean, it has to be an enormous amount. Also, it's one more deal. The chicken gets one head per meal, while most normal creatures are disposed of. So, you need to relax and not have to worry about constantly getting bitten or fried by. Frankly, ever since my family obtained, I've loved chickens. We have seen them as deters and ticks, other creepy crawlers hanging about, trying to ruin our moment of satisfaction. While chickens are great solutions to both problems, never lose sight, they're also hand-joyable companions. Probably, the most common reason for family sharing chickens is the remarkable eggs hens produce. Usually, a hen will lay about one egg every day or two. So, just think, if you obtain amazingly two hens, then you're roughly receiving 14 eggs in a week. Now, this may not sound like a lot to you, but if you're like my family and I, who've had five hens in a time, you'd be begging people to take orders full of eggs, just to wait in the refrigerator for more eggs soon to be coming. But I must warn you, in the winter, hens take a little break from laying. So, I advise you to enhance your strength, so you can get as many eggs when you're out. Also, if you have hens, you know, exactly, where eggs you've been seen up there are healthy and delicious. Plus, you can save a good chunk of money for your own chicken's eggs. Let's face it, spending money on store-bought eggs can really empty your wallet. Despite purchasing little items, a farm of eggs every week or two can add up quickly. By gaining hens, you will never, ever have to worry about buying eggs again. Additionally, you can also make old cash off of precious chicken eggs. Want to tend to farts and fill a mini-market? Then you can start to sell organic chicken eggs to your friends, family, and anyone, really, who enjoys the simple pleasures of fresh, farm eggs. It's an accessory to make a lot of money on the side, which is always good when you access, just in case you need some extra cash. When the ice cream cup comes rolling around? In conclusion, I reckon chickens make pretty darn good pets. But what do you think? Would you consider purchasing chickens now, informed about all the excellent benefits they provide? Or are you still a more traditional person, and rather stick with a cat, doll, or even get a little crazy pet fish?
Do you have any questions for our student leaders before they leave?
I think you did an excellent job, every one of you. Thank you for hosting. Absolutely, thank you.
We are here for you all this year. Sounds like you're off to a great start.
Thank you, ladies. I don't have any picks either.
All right, our next item on the agenda is 3D Miss Acres with our attendance and enrollment report.
Those ladies are hard to follow. First, with our attendance, I have our enrollment. And, again, it's kind of like last time, I had the comparison between last year and this year. But, this was as of yesterday. And so, it's the most accurate data up until yesterday on the first day of school. For Calvary, they have a total of 211 students with the predicted 18 preschoolers. That would put them at 229. Glasspot, they had 439 with the predicted 32 preschoolers, which give them a total at 471. Lebanon Elementary has 330, they are expected 19 preschoolers, so that will give them 322. Wes Marion had 351 students yesterday. They have 36 predicted to come to their preschool, that will give them 387. Marion County Middle, 430 students. The Knight Academy, 473. Marion County High School had 725 students. And QC Spotting, 119, for a total of 3,051. The next slide. So, this was so easy. So, this far is the attendance as of yesterday, and I will mark it every single day, but it was 100% attendance yesterday. Mr. Lyons said I'd have the best attendance report for the year today, so... The next two slides are basically the monthly and the year-to-date, and that's blank. But next month, I will have data in the fields for August. And so, you can just slide through those next two pages. So, we've completed two instructional days with 172 more to go. So, the next two slides, and you have a packet of information, and I could email that to you as well. But, at our last meeting, we talked about the redistricting and outside agencies that could be of assistance. Mr. Spotting and I did a demo with a company called TransFinder. And there's just a little bit of data, and like I said, there's tons here. But, TransFinder, it will show all of the students who are enrolled. But there are tons of resources and reports that we can look at that will disaggregate that data. We can create the boundary routes for the buses. The reports that are available, it can be however we want to filter. It can be by grades, it could be by our special ed population, it could be by poverty levels, gender. There's a ton of different reports that can be printed. Whenever I talked to him, when I've talked to Frank, he said the timeline, you know, once tickets be okay, about 30 to 45 days, he could have the information prepared for us. If it was approved in September to go with TransFinder, then by late October, early November, we would have the information. Like I said, he has a wealth of resources in the basic package. The basic package for the first year was a little bit over 9,000, 9,045. And then the second year, I think it was 3,650, and then the last year was 3,833. What I noticed about TransFinder was all the information that could also help with buses. Frank said that he would be more than happy to sit down with anyone interested, and he would do a demo. He sat down and did the demo with Mr. Spotting and I. I mean, you could print out things for the bus drivers. You could even print out a picture of every kid on the bus, and it would say exactly where that child lives, how long it would take to get there. So, he had a lot of resources above and beyond just creating those boundary lines. The next company that we talked, was, we talked to Lauren Woods with Davis Demographics. And so, it was a different conversation. We didn't have a demo, and he said he would be willing to have another conversation with anyone interested. We didn't get a demo of his program, but their program is more about doing student forecast. He said he would prefer to have 18 months to do it, but he said this would, he could make it work. But, really, student forecasting and creating the boundary lines is their specialty. They didn't have a lot to do with transportation, but really, it was more about the boundary planning. If you only wanted to do student forecasting and looking at our students and the population, and what they predict the population to be like. They had a three-year contract, it was $20,000 annually. So, for three years, it would be a total of $60,000. And the boundary planning pricing, they have two different options. One is at 7,500, the other option is at 17,500. The difference that I noticed between the two would be an additional virtual workshop. And then, they would do two onsite visits and some professional development of the ad hoc services that they provide. So, that's in a nutshell, that's the two companies that I talked to. Davis Demographics works a lot with Fayette County. Like I said, I will be more than happy to send you the emails that they sent to me. And if you wanna set up and talk to both of them, I can set up a meeting too with Davis Demographics and TransFinder. Any questions?
Will TransFinder be more workable as far as what we're looking for, or...
I think the conversations were really, really different. Whenever I talked to Davis Demographics, it was more of a conversation just over the phone. Whenever I talked to TransFinder, we went through the program. Like, he showed the different, I could see what the program looked like. And like I said, he's more than welcome to do that, more than willing to do that with you guys if you are interested. I felt like that the TransFinder offered a lot more for cheaper.
I know, I was gonna say, the year one, you know, after we get all this set up and going, and we wanna keep up to date, what's the biggest benefit for TransFinder? Is it just keeping bus routes updated? Or, you know, would there be a reason to keep it for year two and three, I guess would be my question.
Well, I think that, I mean, the bus resources would be fantastic for transportation, especially for, if you had a sub-driver, you can match up exactly where you're gonna go. Here's the kid's face, you know what they're gonna look like. I mean, it will tell you the geographic location of their house, how far they are from a bus stop. That would be fantastic. But I also think if you need to change your boundary lines, you could filter, create a filter on the boundaries, and adjust them as you feel necessary.
It also, what you, you said query, like where certain populations, or if it was more dispersed, like, you know? Those kinds of things that would be important to us, too. But my question is, TransFinder didn't talk about doing training?
They will do training.
They will do training. Is it an additional fee for that, or is it built into that first year?
It is built in with a basic price.
Okay.
Does the cost go down as you go along? Say, if you stay with them so many years, does the cost go down, and do they upgrade program?
So, we didn't get into that conversation except for the first three years. Of course, the first year is the most expensive year, and then it goes down the second, third. Beyond the third year, I'm not sure. That is something I can find out, though.
What's the, we're supposed to look at it every five years?
There's no law that dictates, it's best practice, and just to kind of look at your attendance zones every five to seven years. And I think it's been, what, more than 15 now since we've done it?
It's something like this, as far as if you held this program, would it be something you could adjust year to year? Make it beneficial to where essentially you're looking at over every year instead of...
I think that's definitely an option. I mean, because I don't think, you know, here in Marion County, our population has stayed pretty, pretty flat. We haven't grown, but we also haven't shrunk the way that some other districts have, that we, you know, we learned from them. we, you know, we learned from that conversation with Katie. But I think the way that it could help us is telling us how our population is shifting within the county. So when we've got new developments coming up, we know that families are gonna move into a particular area, so I think we could definitely look at it every year and just see, you know, are we seeing any major population shifts that would cause, say, Wes Marion Elementary to skyrocket and another elementary school to go down, that kind of thing. So I think there's benefits to it, and if this is something, if this is a program that we opt to go with, you know, I've talked to other district leaders who have utilized Transponder and found it very helpful, in, you know, their redistricting efforts too. So I think, I agree with you, Ms. Acres, I think it's a lot of functionality for a lower cost, and I think there are gonna be a lot of other districts that could provide us with tips and tricks on how to navigate it effectively too, so. Do you have any additional questions? Thanks so much.
All right, moving on to the finance report.
Looking at July twenty-three versus July twenty-two. Going through there, obviously not collecting any property taxes in either year there. Normal motor vehicle, we did get, that motor vehicle tax did come in. It was a transfer out from last year, so that's an audit adjustment, so there'll probably be another one for that for the June next year. The big one there is utility, that has to do, that we did receive the utility tax in July this year, we didn't get it to August last year, so that'll catch up next month. The biggest one, obviously, one of the big ones is the interest. We got our first month of interest in. You see there, but last year, we had ten thousand dollars for interest, this year we got forty-three thousand. The total interest for all funds this month was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, so that gives you up from the destruction profits of Calvary and the high school technology grant, probably get some food service, and then the remainder goes to general fund. So that's hitting all five of those accounts for a collective one thirty-four this month. Last year was getting point five. We get a rotating fluctuation rate each month, July was four point one seven, so over eight times higher. Seek is about the same, down two percent right now, that will be, someone adjusted, they kind of, first few months is kind of projected numbers, but once the tax rates pass and everything's assessed, then we'll cap off the rest of the year with that. Medicaid's a timing issue of, again, an audit adjustment, since we can get payments in July that really should be in fiscal year, prior fiscal year. So overall, looking at the receipts, we're up two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars this month over that, but in, some of that will be adjusted from the audit. Going on down to the expense side, going through, you'll see that bottom of it, the biggest one's gonna be awful, but this time is in plant maintenance operations, we did a lot of stuff this year in July to get our buildings ready, so we did spend a little bit more money this year in July than we did prior year. So overall, expenses are up about a hundred thousand dollars, but we're still ahead where we are this time last year. The audit is in full underway, we're working White Company, going very, very, very busy, full steam ahead, and then the tax hearing, the advertising has hit the paper yesterday for the second time, so we'll be having that on April, promised by August twenty-first at five o'clock. And I'll pass up kind of the training data for the month of July compared to others. I started doing this, instead of doing by total, we're starting to run it by period, at where you can see where we are now, period the same time last year, in these bigger tick labels.
Questions for Scott?
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number four, I need a motion on item four A, please.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of pay application number nineteen to Griggs Enterprises in the amount of six hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-six cents for work performed, and one hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred and three dollars and fifty cents to vendors for materials on the Marion County High School project BG twenty-one dash one zero three.
Any questions here? All in favor? Oh, sorry.
We questioned how we're moving along as far as?
We're progressing nicely. I don't know if I'm supposed to say this out loud, but we're anticipating it being finished by October first.
How far ahead of schedule is that?
Quite a bit, quite a bit. In fact, I think, was it January, is that what we're saying, Scott?
Yeah, we were thinking, maybe we ought to turn the calendar, you wrote, probably ahead of that. Mr. Perry said, probably for finishing up there, if you're really close to starting, just a finish is upstairs, so. There's only a few audits until last, and the punishment side is what we are working toward.
Primarily, the remaining work is on the second floor.
Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item four B.
I make a motion to consider approval of change order number twenty-four for the Marion County High School project BG number twenty-one dash one oh three in the amount of eight hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-five cents.
Second. You wanna talk a little bit about?
Yeah, so it's a small change order, but what it includes is a few fire lights, the strobe lights that you see with the fire alarm system.
Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion on item four C.
Make a motion to consider approval of payout number four to Griggs Enterprises in the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents for work performed, and one hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents to vendors for materials on the new Calvary Elementary School BG twenty-two oh five two.
Second.
Questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion on item four D, please?
Motion to consider approval of change order number five to Griggs Enterprises in the amount of a credit of twenty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty dollars for the new Calvary Elementary School BG twenty-two dash oh five two.
Can you tell us a little bit about this?
Yeah, so that's a location change for our fire suppression system, moving that from the vault area to the mechanical room.
Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item four E.
Make a motion to consider approval of pay application number two to Air Construction LLC in the amount of fifty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars for work performed on six outdoor classrooms, project BG twenty-two dash three two eight.
How many of those are going right now?
Chris? Six of those.
Are all six being worked on at the same time?
Also, Calvary, Calvary's waiting to get some more further along with construction, or it won't be in the way of equipment, so it's onsite.
Now, what's the anticipated completion date?
This fall.
When?
This fall. We've already talked about that.
And then we still have funds available to install one at Lebanon Elementary School as well? That's right. Any other questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item four F.
Make a motion to consider approval BG one for Marion County High School gym roof replacement in the amount of four hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred dollars, BG number twenty-four dash oh four seven.
Second.
Mr. Brady, do we have an update from the insurance company on their approval of?
They have approved the four now.
Perfect, and that's the silver shiny roof?
They don't make that silver shiny, but it's a light color roof.
Perfect, so not black.
Yes.
Other questions?
We have an expected completion date.
They're gonna do that this fall too?
This fall.
This fall.
Will that be affecting basketball season?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item four G, please?
I make a motion to consider approval to declare an emergency to address water penetration to the exterior of Glasscock Elementary.
I'll second.
Any questions here?
Is that where, earlier, where it was coming through the front of the buildings?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item four H.
Make a motion to consider approval to request a finding to the current district facility plan.
I'll second. And so what's the process from here? So we approve this motion, and then the LPC will be called back together?
They will, they will to approve just that one change to declare Glasscock in need of repair.
And then after that?
So after that, we'll come back with a BG one for you all to approve, to get that work started, hopefully, very, very soon.
And we'll need to reapprove the DFP, right? Or will we get that funded? Other questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
Item four I is acknowledgement of field trips, so acknowledged, and I need a motion on item five.
I'll make a motion to approve items five A through five L.
Any questions? Thank you very much to the Kentucky Cooperage Company for that donation and supporting our Marion County High School football team. Cooperage has always been a stellar partner, so we are very lucky to have them in our community. All in favor?
Aye.
Item six is acknowledgement of personnel actions, so acknowledged, and I need a motion on item seven, please.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.